Welcome to Go Off and Create, the podcast, a podcast where we sit down with all kinds of people to talk about, well, how they go off and create. I'm your host Cam, and today I'm sitting down with Joy Treadwell. How are you, Joy?
I'm doing well. Today's amazing.
Awesome. So, how do you go off and create?
So, I would say first and foremost, right now, I'm going off and creating because I'm running for office. But prior to that, I really just like to live and honor whatever's working for me in the moment, right? And one of the things I've been working on is that what's working for me today might not be working for me tomorrow. And going off and creating for me means honoring whatever that is. And so, changing course when time is necessary, and that's kind of what landed me here.
Oh, that's awesome. But changing course is okay, you know? Sometimes people think of walking in a purpose means just that purpose, but your purpose can change. So, I love that. So, you're running for city council of where?
I'm running for city council in South Fulton District Two.
I don't even know what district I live in.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, it's been my home for the last six years. And so, I'm thrilled to actually have made, you know, my community there. I grew up in Stone Mountain. And I lived in Gwinnett for a while, and then made my way to the south side. And so, was loved it mainly because I get good food, I have great people. But it was a place I said I was gonna find my forever home, and fortunately for me, I did.
By the way, people, South Fulton is in Georgia. If you're watching from a different state or different country, just wanted to put that out there. But before we get into the deets of you running for city council, like what do you like about South Fulton?
Yeah. So, for me, it is an opportunity for me to be, we're 91% African American. So, it was a place for me to really call home. It's actually relatively reminiscent of how I grew up in the early ages of DeKalb in the early 90s. And so, for me, I was looking for a place where I felt like I could be myself, but also a place where we had similar values. Work and education in my professional realm. And so, what it means to walk into a school and know that what's being taught to kids and how we're supporting kids and how we're building community is very aligned to how I was raised was important to me. I didn't necessarily have that in some of the other places that I lived. And so, I was really seeking an opportunity to be like, I can be of this community and not just in it, right? Where I go to the grocery store, I come home every day. This is a place where I have really built my network. It's also a place where you see, um, I grew up in the era where like, if something happens in the neighborhood, like we're all pitching in, right? So, you know, if somebody passes away, we're bringing food over to the house. If somebody has surgery, every neighbor is picking a day to cook. And I founded my subdivision in our like dual cul-de-sac. Just that, like we are a neighborhood of neighbors, you know? If I leave my garage up, it's only 10 minutes before somebody is like, girl, what are you doing? Your garage is up. Put it down, you know? And it's like, oh, I just went for a walk. Doesn't matter. Put it down, you know? We have a family in a way that I think people underestimate the value of. I think this last season of my life has really just shown me how important that is. You know, your friends will be there for you, but sometimes it's also just nice to come home and be like, these people are also here for me too.
Absolutely. Communal is definitely important. Community is definitely important, especially now in the political realm. Or definitely need some strong communal touchpoints. But I know that politics could be jarring. So, with that though, just in case, because you are building up to start campaigning, what is a song that brings you joy?
So, I've got a couple. My favorite song of Alzheimer's reason is by Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. That brings me a lot of joy. I will also say September. I'm gonna Earth, Wind &amp; Fire kinda kick. And then I will say, I have been really enjoying the old, um, well, it's not old now, Renaissance Beyonce. The Cuff It, the Cozies, that's been my vibe lately, really enjoying it. But yeah.
So, you're taking them on the campaign trail with you?
I don't know about that. But when I'm in the car on the way to the campaign, I absolutely will, yeah.
I mean, but I feel like reasons.
Reasons is good.
Reasons that we're here.
Yes, yes.
You know what I mean? Cause it's in the song.
It is in the song.
So, there's that. But now that you are running for city council, what made you want to run for it?
A lot of different reasons. I never thought of being a politician. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure there're gonna be some people who watch this and be like, I remember when that girl said she would never do that. You know, and it's funny. Listen, that's why you should never say never, right?
Exactly.
But there were a lot of factors that kind of led me to a place where when you start to make a place your home, there are the things that you love about it, and then you also have the first line of sight or the front line to see like, what do I wanna see differently? For me, I think I shared in 2024, I lost my partner unexpectedly. And just the emergency services and the way in which that situation was handled led me to wanna do more. It wasn't just the loss because there's a lot of grief, I mean, an immense amount of grief there. But it was also about, he was a people person, and he was always about what people deserve. And he didn't care about whether, you know, what class you came from, what race you were, if you were breathing air, basically. You got his very best. And I felt like in that moment, when he needed it the most, the city was unable to give him their very best. And so, for me, that is really what sparked it. So, I would have conversations after the funeral, and I would tell people all the things and all the ideas. And two people were like, you should run for, uh, city council. And I was like, ah, they're playing. Well, by the time the third person said it, I was like, well, maybe I should actually listen and pray about it and see if this is really the trajectory where I wanna go on. And it was funny because James would always say things like, just pull the trigger. That was his favorite word to me because I can be very indecisive. And so, whether I'm buying a couch, I'm shopping that couch for like three months. And so, I think, you know, spiritually, he knew that I would labor over this for months. And so, for the next couple of weeks, I just kept hearing him say like, just pull the trigger, just pull the trigger, just pull the trigger. And so, that's what we did because it's an opportunity for me to not just talk about the change that I wanna see in the city, but to really put actions to those kind of lofty words in a way that I can lay my head down at night.
So, does it feel scary?
Oh, it's terrifying. I would. It is absolutely terrifying. I think what gets me the most is I am a person that loves to be heard, not necessarily seen. So, like even stepping on this side of the camera in this podcast is like, girl, we're doing the thing, you know? But it's, it is definitely terrifying, but I have, oh my gosh, the most amazing team. Every time I pick up a phone and I call somebody and like, girl, you got this, you can do it. It just fuels me in a different way. Enough to kind of quell my own inner thoughts in a way that keep me moving, but.
That's good. So, when you say you have a team, how many people are on this team? Did you correlate the team, or does the team come with?
Yeah. So, I basically reached out to some strong people in my network who do this. And they put together some core folks for me who support the campaign. And then the second I said, hey, this is what I wanna do, my girlfriends were like, say less. So, I've gotten an amazing team of volunteer, uh, who are both close personal friends who have day jobs, which I'm always reminded of, but somehow still are able to get it done. Kendra, who's a dear friend of mine, she is like the, the, she sees a gap and is like, boom, I'mma fix it. So, she's continued to do that for me. And I think honestly, uh, if it wasn't for them, that's also a part of what keeps me moving, right? Because it's like, now I done had this idea and I bought all these people. Like you can't afford to just be like, oh no, girl, I was just playing, right? So, it is about stepping outside of your comfort zone, which is something people say, right? Like if you are gonna step outside your comfort zone, people are like, yeah, I wanna live outside my comfort zone. But when you're doing it and you're living it, it's hard.
A hundred percent. I think that especially now, and I wanna preface now, like, politics is almost like a derogatory word, if you will. It's very scary for a lot of people. So, the thought of probably even running for some people is like, no, get me out of here. So, the fact, that's why I wanted to ask you if it was scary, just simply because, you know, it can be a lot. Just personally, you know what I mean? And also life be lifeing, and you still wanna live your life, you know? And that's why I wanted to see, cause I would be like deer in headlights, like you want me to what?
It is. There're moments like that, like this is not my wheelhouse. Education is my wheelhouse. And most educators do not get an education to do politics. Now, there are a lot of politics in education, but that's not why we, why we do it. And so, I think for me, what's been, uh, the thing I've had to overcome the most around it being scary is just all the would ifs. Right? Like, it's so funny because I have a niece who's 12, and I was talking to her about, oh, I'm thinking about running for office. And she said, oh, I think you'd be great at it. And like that warmed me, but I'm like, that's also what she's supposed to say. And, um, so I said to her, I was like, you know, I just have to get over this fear of losing. And at 12, she said, well, Kamala lost, and she's okay. I think you'll be fine. And I was like.
Good. Cause she.
Either we're doing something right, but she's, she is speaking truth right now. And so, every time I think about the what ifs, like what's on the other side of November 4th, like you can, that is the scariest part. Win or lose, right? Like that is the scariest part. And so, then just being able to say like, no, you know what, um, it happens and somebody has to. We all can't be winners. This is not a participation trophy kind of event. And so, yeah, I'll be okay.
You will be okay. You know what? Let's put it out there. So, what are some things that you like wanna campaign around, like you wanna see like South Fulton have?
Yeah. So, South Fulton is what I consider a new-ish city. Uh, we are seven years old. And with that, exactly. With that, there's plenty of opportunity for us to really get clear on how we pull up and have a seat at the table. I think for me, what I'm most sincere about, and there are kind of three things I'm running on. The first is increased accountability for our city leadership. Local politics are local. They impact our community directly. And so, we've gotta make sure that we're being good stewards of our policies, our resources, and our finances in ways that actually drive change for the people who live next to me that I care so much about. The second thing I'm running on is really, uh, some regional collaboration. Like I, we are not in a vacuum. So, right next door is East Point, College Park, Union City, Fairburn, Peachtree City, Palm Meadow, Douglasville, all the things. And so, like, we really need a regional approach to being able to work with our partners to say like, hey, it's not just about what's happening in South Fulton, right? South Fulton can't decide to build 10 data centers and Union City decide to build 10, right? Like that isn't how that works. And so, making sure that like we have a level of regional collaboration around the things that matter for residents. Because while I live in South Fulton, I shop at the Publix in East Point. Right? Like, it could be either way. Like, we have a community of people, and so it, they really are all of our residents because at some point, these lines will cross. And then the third thing I'm really running on is just improving the quality of life for residents. Uh, reducing our emergency response times, building strong systems, and, uh, training centers and opportunities where we have access to quality, uh, medical resources, including, um, there was a study some years ago that talked about if you live in South Fulton, you're shaving off seven years of your life in comparison to our counterparts in the northern part of the county. And so, for me, it's about rectifying that. All of that was based off of our access and our quality to resources. And so, it is, it was no shock to me. James and I knew we live 36 minutes from any nearby hospital. However, when you need that to be in a metro area, that is, you know, you wanna be closer than that. You wanna have higher, uh, quality of care. And so, for me, it's, it's about that. It's about access to quality healthcare. It's about building the social services that matter. I, uh, took care of my parents as they aged. And that is not an easy thing to do, and communities oftentimes don't talk enough about it. And so, for me, it's also about building the social services that support like a multi-generational household. With a level of intentionality that, you know, I shared with people like, I was 40, you know, when my mom got Alzheimer's. Like, I can't afford to quit my job and care for her. In the same way that she was able to retire to take care of her mother, right? And so, I think that there are, um, just needs, community needs. Every day, what do the people need? And that's really what we've been doing, is hitting the pavement, hear from the people.
Hit the pavement. So, it's really talking to the community and then seeing where you can actually meet those needs. But how do you even go about meeting the needs? Like, is it like raising money to get this infrastructure started, or is it awareness? Both?
It's a little bit of both. For us, it's also about raising awareness. The second part of it is that there're some really good blueprints. Like, as a city, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are great things happening, not just in this amazing state, but also across this amazing country that have really good blueprints. And there's an opportunity for us to study those blueprints, take what's applicable, put aside what isn't applicable, and improve our community. South Fulton is a large city, and so, when you think about the potential there, I get excited because I think that what most people don't have is like they're trying to make shift a city out of things that are already 80 to 90% complete. Like, we really have a community in a city that can be a blank canvas, but it doesn't always take creating from scratch. Sometimes it's worth looking and studying some of the more effective blueprints and saying, okay, here's what we wanna do.
Okay. That's true though, but that's a great way to get like out of the box, like you are in the box with like the blueprints. But you can be like, okay, I love this, so we wanna implement that here. But how can, or is there a way that the community or the residents can help, or is there something they should be doing?
Yeah. Yeah. So, right now, um, there are eight other folks in this race. All of us are hitting the pavement. I think what I would ask of every resident is to talk to us. Because at the end of the day, regardless of who is in that seat, uh, what we wanna carry with us is their voice. Um, and so, the second part of that is, you know, raising money and campaigns is, is all a part of the work. But that money doesn't mean anything if whoever gets elected can't do what the people desire. And so, for me, it's just also about how do we make sure that we're hearing voices from, I represent District Two. That's the district that I, um, hope to take the seat for. However, I would sit on a city council that is making decisions for an entire city. So, it doesn't matter whether you're District Two resident, three, four, five, six, or seven. But that you're an opportunity that you can share your voice and let it be heard. Show up to the council meetings and speak on the public comment, whether it's about an issue today or simply an issue that needs to be heard, so.
So, but mentioning like speaking up, like meaning going to your city council meetings and things like that. Like, I don't think that's a popular thing across any kind of county. Like, when you hear about that, it's not talked about. One, if you're in high school, I think we had to go to some city council meeting for a particular class, but I don't think everybody's high school does that. So, I don't think people really understand the importance of knowing what's going on in your community by going to the city council meeting. And I'm no professional. I haven't been to a city council meeting since high school. So, and it's been a while. So, it's like, for you to say like, go to your city council meeting, I just wanna put more emphasis on that because I think a lot of communities don't, but also think a lot of people are busy and they can't really just tune in. And I think a lot of people are looking for a break to compress and not be in the, the political, you know, bubble. And though, I know this is local government. Is there a way to, I don't know, maybe, not in the campaign, but just, is there a way to encourage people to get more involved in those meetings? To be able to voice their opinions and try to get what they need for their community?
Yeah. We've talked a ton, I think, just in communities in general around voter apathy and what it means to have able voters, uh, elect to not participate in a process. I think it's real, and I think a part of the reason that's our reality is because in many ways, whether it's local, state, or federal, we failed our community. And so, I'm only gonna show up so many times before I'm like, okay, you're not listening. And I think that what is important for us is we spend a lot of time trying to innovate in a lot of spaces other than government. And so, the way we access constituents, the way in which we talk to our residents, the way in which we surface or bubble up their needs, needs to be rethought. I shouldn't have to come to a five-hour meeting to tell you everything that is, that I wanna know, right? Um, and so, I think there are opportunities for us. And, you know, South Fulton is great, like managing social media, hosting a number of events. I think that's a start, right? Like getting outside of the box and making sure that we are meeting the people and doing the things in ways that actually wanna attract them to be a part of the community. And not just a transactional relationship where you pay your taxes and you hope that the, you hope that the pothole gets fixed. And so, I think there's a world where if we can be more, um, transformational in how we support our residents. And it's not just a give and take always. But sometimes it's just a give. And so, I think that, you know, it matters.
I like that. Sometimes it's just a gift because it can be exhausting. And to your point, I completely agree that I think how you run the government should be more innovative now because how, like, I know South Fulton's seven years old, but government itself has been around for like, I don't know, the test of time, I guess, at this point. So, it's like you have to reinvent it. And I think we're seeing some of that, not just South Fulton, but in general. Like, some people have a different way of talking to the people. So, I do think that's a great, a great perspective. Now, when it comes to the people, are there like, since there's eight of you guys running, is there like three things that residents should be aware of when they're thinking about who they're gonna vote for, or?
Yeah. I think what I try to be really candid about is that this is hard work, and it's not glorified work. Um, I don't think there's a city council person, it doesn't matter what seat they sit in. If you had to run for office, it is laborious, it is honorable work, uh, but it's hard. I think, uh, what I would encourage residents to think about is who's willing to put in the hard work, who is also, you know, not looking to just make a name for themselves, but also looking for the long haul. And who has concrete ideas? I think there are a lot of lofty words. And it's not just for me, win or lose. That's what I'll be holding my city council accountable for. Like, taking these lofty ideas and turning them into actionable results for residents who not just pay their taxes, but have chosen. And that is the part for me that I echo on my campaign. I chose South Fulton. And so, I have a duty and an obligation to show up for the place that I chose in a way that I'm ready to serve. And so, anybody who sits on that council currently or in the future needs to be ready to serve.
Yep. Okay. You saying stuff. I like it. I don't even live in South Fulton, but I like it. I like it. So, I mean, you keep mentioning the residents, but also just community. So, like, would you bring any kind of like fun things to the community, like festivals or anything like that?
Listen, uh, so South Fulton is home to Wolf Creek Amphitheater, which is amazing. But I, y'all, my parents are from New York. So, I grew up with a good block party built into my system at an early age. And so, for me, I think those are the types of events that I appreciate. I love the food trucks. I love the community events. I love the farmers markets. I love to get out and wobble in the middle of the parking lot. I love the just come together. Our family between, uh, New York and Chicago, like that historic Hyde Park. I think South Fulton has an opportunity to make its own history. And what it requires is that we do it really intentionally. It's also home to what I would say, a mul- a multi-generational community. And so, seeing that, you know, while I love a good block party, you know, there might be some other needs and we might wanna have a movie night. But the idea is that we gotta get people outside their doors, y'all. And we gotta get people talking, doing the things in community because regardless of what happens, we are literally gonna be all we have. And if this, what I recognize in this season is that there are, we don't have to agree on everything to treat each other with a level of dignity that we all deserve. And so, for me, you get to that place when I might not agree with you, but yes, we can get out here and do the Cupid Shuffle together and go to our respective places. So, I think for me, that, that's what I'm looking forward to. I'm looking forward to building a community and hosting events. In James's honor, we host, uh, my baby was a barbecuer, so he loved getting on a grill. And so, we still continue to do his block party. Uh, we now do it Memorial Day. We support a scholarship fund in his honor. Yes, come on. We have food trucks, we have games, we had, uh, this past, uh, Rosa's Chicken and Waffles, uh, hosted. And we had funnel cake, we had games, we had a, um, game truck, we had, you know, course of bars. We had a DJ. We did all the things.
Keep me abreast, cause I have a South Fulton email, so you gotta let me know.
Yeah. So, we, and again, we did that and supported his scholarship. And I think for me, what is important about that is we were able to bring people together, not just, you know, can you donate to this thing? Yeah. I could click the link, I can donate to the thing, but no, what James was about was friendship, community, brotherhood. Um, so, yeah.
That's beautiful. I'm, I'm really serious though, like, let me know.
Listen, you are on the invite list.
But we, we fast forward, but I do want you to explain what the responsibility of a city councilman is.
Yeah, for sure. So, the first thing I would say, your city council member is actually going to be the greatest steward over local policies. It is has a lot to do with, for example, what things are being zoned. Is this a residential zone? Is it a commercial zone? You're also gonna see, um, how public safety is both funded and then supported. That is gonna be a localized decision. You're also gonna see a lot of, um, decision-making as it relates to like your everyday things. Where are the sidewalks in your, um, neighborhood, um, or not in some cases, right? So, your local council member is really there to make sure that at the city level, at the local level, the tax dollars that you are spending is actually improving and impacting you in a positive way on your day-to-day. There's also a level of, um, kind of seeing around the corner, right? So, I mentioned the data centers, which is a relatively new in this age of AI, right? And so, your council members have to be able to anticipate some of the things that will be coming down the pipeline so that they can make decisions that are in the best interest, interest of residents. And then the last thing that I would say is kind of like their biggest thing for me is really passing and supporting legislation or policies that actually create communities that aren't, um, antiquated, right? We got a lot of things on the books that I would say are about making, that are about building a new city because for us, we're building the template while flying it. But if I was speaking to somebody who's in an existing, you know, you've been a city for eons and eons, it's important that some of those old policies get rewritten in ways that support your community. And so, it's actually the passing of policies and legislation at the local level that I think is probably key. And sometimes they're retracting a little. Yeah.
Yes, let's retract, cause some of them are too old. Get them out of here. So, I also want you to explain the importance of voting in your local, your local, uh, government.
Yeah. So, you know, everybody says like local politics matter. And I grew up, I don't know if I share, but my parents went to segregated schools. So, I consider myself a bridge between two generations, and I, I didn't hear those stories about my, um, parents' experiences from like my grandparents. I heard them directly from my parents. And that led me to believe and to do things a certain kind of way. And so, local politics are local in that what you decide to vote for or who you decide to vote for is going to directly impact you and your children. I think that what I'm most thoughtful about is that they're also the people you have the greatest access to. I love my senators, and I, you know, can go see Warnock at Ebenezer on Sundays, but I'm probably not gonna get to have a conversation with him. I'll be spiritually fed, but I won't have a conversation with him. The reason your local politics matter is because these are the people you are closest to and you have closest access to, to be able to share both what they're doing well and how they're moving the city forward, but also what you need as a resident. And so, for me, I think it does matter because the people you want in that seat are people who you want to, who prioritize listening over, you know, self-interests of politics.
I want you to speak to it because everyone often hears like, your local government's more important. Pay attention to your local government. So, I definitely want you to touch base on that. But also, I think that, I know this is my experience, like especially when it's local, it's hard to, it's hard to really like figure out what people, what people's like key points are because there is like no website where it's like, oh, this person's talking about this, this person wants to do this for their, for the city, this person wants to do this. So, it's really hard to really even remember like half of the people who are running on the campaign. Or if you do know who's running on the campaign, it's hard to remember everyone's key points, you know? So, I think that makes it harder when you get to the ballot to vote because you're like, I don't remember who so-and-so or whomever, you know? So, I think maybe you talking about how important it is, maybe being more proactive. Maybe someone needs to make a website where they just like, like, this is what this person's about. Somebody make a website. It's not gonna be me, but somebody make a website so that way you can just catalog everybody, like this is what they want.
And then make some aligning, yeah.
Yeah. I think people are looking for it to be easier to know what the people are running about, like what their campaign is. And I know I am, but I'm looking for people to be like, not just accessible, but the information about accessible. So, that way, when I go to vote, I'm like, okay. I know this person's doing this, this person wants to do this. Who do I feel comfortable with? Who do I feel like I trust, or who do I feel like is being genuine? Because that's, for me, that's what it comes down to, like who do I feel like really cares about the people? Really cares about the community? Cause if I don't feel that, then it's harder for me to be like, this is a good person to, to go with.
Yeah, absolutely. There are some, I don't know them off the top of my head, but some people are right on target about what you're saying. It's like trying to make it more accessible for folks to see the snapshot of who is running. And I think what most people will recognize about their city council is that change is an opportunity. Anytime there's an election, it's an opportunity. And there are some great council members doing the work and our incumbents and are running and are doing the things. And they too should be reaffirmed and reelected, you know? I think what happens is the power really is in, uh, what happens at the ballot box. And there's a point in which we've gotta actually be ready to make that change and vote with our feet, as people say. But also, I think there's an opportunity, y'all, where none of us are, we're only one degree away from each other's ideas. We are not talking about major massive shifts in most of these local elections. So, I think doing your research and understanding. So I think doing your research and understanding uh, what people's record says about them, what their professional experience says about them. You know, anytime you make a vote, you're taking a chance. And but know that in due time, you can make a different decision. And I think that's the power of the polls, right?
The powerful, yes. So when do you start campaigning?
So our kickoff is officially, we've already started, but our official kickoff is August the twenty-eighth at Wolf Creek um, on their terrace. Uh, so James also loved to play golf. So we are, I feel like in honoring him and me pulling the trigger. I'm talking to him, I pulled the trigger. Um, we are gonna showcase at Wolf Creek, have an amazing kickoff event. And then from there, yeah, we're like seventy-seven days out. So it is all um, all gears, all the time.
And what do you need us to do? What do you need the team to do while you're campaigning?
You know, I, one would say if what you hear resonates with you, donate to the campaign, support the efforts. Um, our goal is to spend dollars to reach more voters and get them active about the change that needs to happen in our community. I think the second thing that I would say is a volunteer, help us hit the pavement. Uh, we are showing up in neighborhoods, uh, showing up at events. We are um, here uh, to hear from residents. And while I am one person when I hit an event, the more of my team that gets to hear that, the better, the faster we can be responsive and shape our messaging. And then I think the third thing for me is show up on November fourth and vote. Uh, and then bring three people with you.
Is there anywhere someone can specifically find the link to donate or?
Yeah, so if you go to electgeorgeherdwell.com, uh, that's uh, elect and then T R E A D W E L L dot com. Um, you can donate there.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming on the podcast, her very first podcast. I'm so happy to have had you on. Go Off and Create is on all social media platforms. We're not online, but it's on Instagram, it's on Facebook. And if you want to follow our Substack, we're on Substack as well.